That should help you get more accurate, right?
Yeah, and that would be probably considered a foreground service, which I know on Android side of things.
Yeah, I know, let's worry about iOS for now, because we know that it is working. You got a few pings in the last couple of weeks. So. We are doing it. Can we improve it? And how much can we improve it? And I think we need to change the message. I'll work on that, because she's, Tori does not remember receiving those messages. And you're saying for sure they were confirmed delivery?
Yes, I found an amplitude. Again, she was getting flooded with chat messages at the time.
For sure. She had a good idea too of perhaps only showing notifications. Like say you're in a big group chat, only showing you a notification if one of your friends sends a message. I'm assuming that's not too difficult.
It wouldn't be difficult.
So maybe under that notifications bell that Ismail worked on. We could add another feature. Let me get Chantel's opinion. She has strong opinions about notifications. So, how do you like this? Go ahead, Jerry, what were you saying?
I'm sorry, somebody who you also follow or?
Let's start with friends. So Chantel, how do you feel about notifications only displaying in a group chat if it's your friend responding?
Yeah.
You would like that feature?
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like I would too. Maybe. I don't, it's hard to say. Yeah.
I think generally speaking, yes.
Yeah, what about like, okay, with reactions? Still leave that open to where like only the user who wrote the comment sees the reaction notification?
Yes.
Okay, because that always feels good. It's like you get all these reactions.
Yeah.
They're like legs. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, reactions are always by the people who who sent it. Now, another thing is inline replies. Whenever we we work on that inline replies, you know, would kind of work the same way where the person who they're replying to would always get the notification.
Perfect. Regardless of their friendship status.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so if you could change it to just some people, your friends with Chantel, you would do that? Would you do that across the board on all the group chats?
Yes.
Okay, okay, cool. That might solve some issues, but we don't want obviously is people turning off their notifications.
One of the things that I've noticed anyways, because some investors reach out to me like and DM me. And a lot of times they'll say like they just really want to follow other investors, quote, because they're awesome is one of the DMs that I received. Uh, so, and I know that I've seen in other chats where they're like going out of their way to try to make friends and be like, hey, if you follow me, I'll follow you back type things. Like I've seen that just naturally happen. So if that's the way that they want to see notifications from those specific people, then they're opening themselves up to that. But like, if you don't want that, it's going to be so welcomed.
Yeah, so in the case you're describing, you're saying. How would this notification thing affect them?
Yeah, so here's the thing. If you want to have a lot of friends in the app, you're opening yourself up to having more of those notifications. Um, but if you want it to just be your friends, that's the thing that you're catering to. That's the experience you're providing is getting in on what your friends care about, which is the heart of our app, you know?
Exactly, but they could also become friends is what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Might lend itself to that behavior.
Yeah.
So win-win.
Yeah, it by people choosing to make more friends in the app. Then they're choosing to invest that extra bit of their time and attention to those notifications for more people. Versus the people who just want to focus on their friends.
That would help a lot. Hey, Ian, I know you silenced a bunch of notifications. What if, um, Tori, this is Tori had this idea, um, what if? In the big group chats, you only got notifications if it was one of your friends in the app?
Yeah, I liked that. I was hearing what you guys were saying. I like that too. Like if, uh, like, let's say that in the UFC chat, um, I Danny. Said something. I'd be interested in knowing what he said in there. Because I feel like that that organically is something that uh might cause me to want to engage in the chat. But otherwise, it's a bunch of strangers that I'm not necessarily interested in their conversations.
Right.
It's kind of, I think Facebook has a similar feature, um, where when there's a large, um, post, like let's say. Sacramento has this Facebook group called like Sacramento Buy, Sell and Trade, and there's thousands and thousands of people inside of it. And you post like, you know, your car or whatever that you're selling. And um, if a friend of mine posts in there and I'm also in that group, I get like it shows up in my feed uniquely. Because otherwise I have everything else turned off for that group. Like I don't really follow it.
Right, you had, but did you have to turn it off ahead of time?
I think I did. It's been years. Like I don't use Facebook as much anymore, but I think I had to actually go out of my way to say I only want to see posts from my friends.
I see.
Yeah.
All right, then, um, I think we should probably pursue that. Okay, let's go back to what we're talking about, Jerry, and you had a question for Amin regarding the location services?
Yeah, I think we were talking about, yeah, a foreground service that. I'm guessing right now on iOS until we can figure out the best way to handle this with Android app review. Is um, how we could perform a report location. Intermittently in the foreground when the app is open.
Well, and also the question was. Did anything change in spilled twenty-seven?
That is true. If anything changed about the uh, the location, the report location call when you open the app.
So Amin, I got my haircut on Friday at a place I've never been to. And I should have got a notification asking me if I want to favorite it. But I didn't, and I was using the app the whole time. Was there like an hour? Do you know why I wouldn't get that?
I don't see any, uh, I mean, I don't see any location reports from John's phone that would have been like a GPS location report. But I think we usually, we do call them, John does not have location permissions to always, but he only has it to when he's in the app. I know when we open the app that we do call the report location. Uh, I do not know if that was changed or anything to allow the app to pass for Android app review, but John is on an iPhone.
Yeah, um, yeah, those things, they're only affected in Android and the change was not like some code change. More of like, uh, up out of the, uh. Location permission, which is exclusively only for Android. There's no such thing as foreground service for iOS. And. I'm not sure what's going on with that. Um, also like that, are you talking about like the task? Or like every time a user opened the app, we report location? Because like, if we, if we don't get that, like every time the user opened. The app and no reporting happening, that's like an issue. Yeah, I mean, we could look into that, but like as about it. But where it's about the task, the task, it's like, um, it's on the iOS, um. Hands that decides when to run it to frequently keep, uh, uh. Uh, reporting the location. So I'm not sure what's what's going on there, uh.
Well, you're talking about, you must be talking about the background service for location reporting though. Is that right?
Yeah, like I was talking about two things, like the background task. And also like the, um, well, this one is going to be tricky if he was the, if he is the background task. But if it's like, you just opened the app, reporting locations not working. That's, uh, I think that we can look into that and see what's going on.
Yeah, uh, so additional context being is, so John was active in the app. For it sounds like about an hour. And what would have been useful is that if we had reported the location, that he would have received the notification to check in. Where he was getting his haircut, but I don't see any, any location reports that were sent while he was there.
Can we, can we test right now? Like what if I open the app now? By the way, I I almost never force close, so. It's just generally always in the background, but like, can you detect right now if I open it? I'm gonna, I just turn my phone, I got my phone out of sleep. And now I just tapped on the icon for circles. Do you get, are you getting anything?
I, I don't see anything right now. Would you?
About in the last, um, forty-five minutes?
When is sixteen forty? Let's see. Uh, I'm just doing a UTC conversion. The last one we have from you would be. Oh, yeah, it looks like that we last had one from you. Uh, two minutes ago from the background, but it was the wifi report.
Okay, why not GPS?
Uh, it's reporting that it was a background report. I'm curious, if you force close the app and reopen it, I would like to see what happens.
Okay, I'll do that now. And it's open?
Yeah, so now I have a GPS report.
So why are we not getting it when I open it from the background?
Okay, I mean, is that something that you're able to check?
No, let me see if we're doing that, uh.
This is a game changer. You know, people are using the app way more than ever. And they don't necessarily need location permission always. If they're checking messages and we can see, say like, oh, are you getting your haircut? Would you like to favor this place? Like I might have favorited it, you know, I was thinking about other things. Danny, is Danny here?
I am here. Yeah, I was on, but I'm here now.
Cool. Do those builds get approved?
Let me check. Because I usually get an email.
Okay, Chantel, we have a new, um, production. It's in testing, but points to production for Android. Build thirty-two.
I shall do that.
Okay, the onboarding was awesome. Very good job, Amin. It was like smooth, smooth. And it felt better, the flow, the way we have it, all of it, the list view. It was, it was great.
Another good success story, um, this weekend, uh, this past weekend, Diana's brother flew in from Chicago. And we got him in on the app. And I watched his onboarding and everything went great. His cool kid screen had recommendations from like. His friends contacts, so like, for example, his school kids had like my family on it.
Awesome.
And then, uh, did a friend connect. Now, the friend connect was a little odd, um, it, he was already following. Uh, some people in, you know, he was following his family. He was following some people in my family. And, uh, but the recommendations he did was, is he was getting like the circles team for his recommendations and they're like. Her dad was going through it. He's like, do you think Andrew knows Danny Hinkle? I was like, I do, but I don't, he does.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's an unusual situation because you're on the team, we're on the team. You know, normally, like it would be more of a closed circle of people. We're such a spread out, we're, we're a global circle. So it's gonna, I don't, I don't think that would be the same experience for our typical users.
Yeah, anybody who I expected him to see, he saw.
That's great, yeah. And you know, if you get a cou- even a couple hits on the friend connect, like suggesting like, do you know this person? That's still pretty good. Were there a few that he said like, um, that he recommended people would know?
Right, if anything, it was like, uh, my friend was in the app. We've hung out together, um, and family.
Okay. Okay, cool. So there were a couple of hits though?
Yeah, there were certainly hits.
Okay, great.
He did, and I said he did also see them on the cool kid screen.
Right, that's good. So that's good. Okay, excellent. Yeah, we're getting.
Android is ready to publish and Apple is waiting on review.
Okay.
This was on Android, by the way, I wanted to add that.
Okay, good. Okay, let's wait a little bit till Apple's ready and let's test more with Chantel and Todd and me and you. Are you in the latest one, Dan?
Let me check. I think I am.
I've been on it last couple of days.
I was, uh, experiencing a, yeah, I'm in two, three, two, two dot, two dot, three, two.
You're experiencing what?
I was experiencing some kind of problem and I wanted to see if it was a problem in the new build, so I upgraded it. It was nothing major. Another thing that did happen with, uh, with her brother is, uh, he did get caught a bit off guard because his app started going. Woo, like an hour later, and like chats, it was, um. It wasn't chats, it was, um, those old notifications that we send out about like, you know. Uh, favoriting, adding favorites, uh, you know, getting rewards and stuff. Like he was supposed to be receiving those notifications, but he was like, I really hope my app doesn't keep doing that.
Yeah, how many? You shouldn't get more than a couple, right?
Yeah, he only got a couple. He only got the ones he was supposed to get, but it was like after the second time, he was like, I really hope it doesn't keep doing that.
I got the one yesterday. It says, are you watching TV? I mean, I did onboard. Nearly onboarded over the weekend, so is that?
Right, because I had cleared out the notification, the, uh, the history like prior to, I go, so as long as you don't get it again.
Okay.
So, um, regarding the report location, yeah, every time a user opened the app, we do a report location. Uh, if the app was in the background and then, um, bring it back to the foreground, we don't do that. And we can do that, um, it's a interesting to do.
Okay, will you make that a top priority?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so let's, let's explain that one more time, so. Well, what, what, what was it? How was, it was, so was not getting location from the background ever?
Uh, we're not doing, I'm, I'm not sure if we're in the same page. I, I see like we were already doing it and it's failing to work.
John, what it, what it, what it sounded like what Amin said is that he was talking about the location report when you open the app. And that it looks like it would only happen when you come from a hard close.
So that's how it was. It was only from a hard close?
Yeah.
Okay, but now it would be just coming out of the background?
It will be both if you're, uh, hot clothes or if you're coming in from the background.
Okay, that will be a huge improvement. Okay, do you have to be on any particular screen or just anytime you pull it out of the background?
No, any time you pull out from the background.
Okay, and from there, Jerry, what is the interval for pinging?
Uh, for pinging, so, uh.
Uh, because the more, the more pings, the more accurate the location. Because like I said with Tori, out of the three, um, only one was accurate.
Okay, now note, this is, this is going to be inverse function with like battery life, for example, so.
But it will only be occasionally, because like. You have A, you have to pull the app out of the background. And B, you have to, um, be somewhere like, um, in a re- like a local business location. We, I think we should probably figure out. I think Apple can tell you too, like if someone's at home, because like we don't need to ping them when they're at home.
Well, I determine your home location, like I can, I, I can tell like.
Yeah, if you're there often.
Yeah, like where you are most often, like I would say at nighttime hours.
That's perfect. Yeah, so then we eliminate unnecessary pings. But you know, keep in mind like Uber, Lyft, you know. They're gonna ping often because they're, you're waiting for a car to show up.
Well, these are also navigation based apps.
Yeah, we have a map.
Navigation, like, like real time, there's a difference between real time location. Like there, there's differences in even the permission set between something what Uber would use and what we would use. Uber is like.
When I allow the permission for Uber, it's the same modal.
But it's from the code side, there's a location accuracy that we do that's called like navigation. I mean, is that, is that correct? There's like a navigation level location we can request. That sounds something that Uber would use, but we don't.
Precise location, but I don't recall ever. Changed on.
I think there's something more than precise. I think there's something called like real time or something. Or something with like navigation.
I don't know. Does that sound familiar to me?
Yeah, I know the function that we use to, uh, retrieve the location has this param where you can define the accuracy. And one of those, uh, one of those accuracy in the list, it's called navigation.
Okay, what are we doing? I want to do what Uber's doing.
Well, let me see what's going on when we call report location.
I was just looking that up too. It looks like Google Maps uses what's called standard location services on iOS, which is used primarily for like turn by turn. And it says within meters of accuracy.
That sounds good. We want, we need meters of accuracy, because Tori was at a restaurant that was next door to a restaurant and. It got the wrong one.
Yeah, now, something to note though is, uh, to get that, that level of precision. It does take more time, uh, and there's sometimes where it may just not be enough and not reported.
That's what I mean. That's why you want more pings. And, and when you know the person is in like a retail location. You want to ping more. Just like if you call an Uber, I'm sure it starts pinging more, way more frequently because the car's on its way.
Yeah, and then there's another one called background location updates, which has high power consumption and high accuracy.
I, I don't want to.
That one's not even available unless they go always allow. Is that right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure that I'm reading through it right now. It looks like that's kind of like a, um, a unique one for an application to even get approved. To allow a user to ask for.
Yeah, you can, by the way, you can do that highly effectively without draining the battery. Zenly is the gold standard for that, so. I don't want to just say like, oh, we're not going to do that because it drains battery. That's not true. I used Zenly every day for years. And many, millions of people used it and they had, you could not use Zenly without allowing location always. Like you wouldn't even get past the onboarding, so they, they could, it can be done. And there's ways to do it efficiently.
And I don't think our, our location reporting is bad because I have location reports on always and my battery drain is not bad. What really drained my battery is push notifications.
Yeah, that's, we, I want to talk about that later, but not going muddy this, but, um. But also with your location battery stuff being okay, maybe that's because we're not really pinging enough and you're not getting enough accuracy.
We could see, because, uh, when it, when it involves background fetches though, we only have a certain amount of time to perform the background fetch. And sometimes that's not enough time to get the location.
Okay.
What we were having with like background A and Rs and stuff on Android was that. The background fetch was taking too long to get the, the accurate GPS location. So we turned it down a little bit. What I do want to say, John, yes, my, uh, I'm looking at my location report. I have location reporting on always. Even when I'm not in the app. And I am getting location reports, um. Between anywheres from five to fifteen minutes apart.
And it doesn't drain your battery?
Does not drain my battery.
So that's, that would be ample time, like anybody. Who, between five and fifteen minutes is, has stopped somewhere for thirty minutes is like pretty safe bet. They're at like a retail location or home or work.
And this is background location, like, yeah, I've had no problem with the background location reporting. It just requires you to do always. And I don't think people really want that to happen, but at the same time, I will say an app that is awful with location permission management. Is McDonald's. I don't know if anybody's ever used the McDonald's app, but, uh, when you, I think, I don't know if, let me see, actually, let me check right now. Uh, allow certain location permissions. I want to see what I.
Well, you're looking at that. Ian, did you confirm that you have to have it always on for the one you were just describing?
Uh, it didn't specify, uh, whether or not it was always on, it just. It, it's kind of vague. I, I looked at three different websites. It sort of looked what developers use. And like another one that I found is called iBeacon and Bluetooth. So this is where they use like, um, other people's iPhones. And, um, air tags and stuff like that to provide even more significant, accurate, uh, location tracking. And it looks like it's possible Zenly is using a combination of standard location services, which is like the most common one that I think anybody can get approved for. Um, which has two variations, one of which is like as needed when you have the app open and all the time. But using the same technology, just one of them is always and one of them is sometimes. And then, uh, in common or in conjunction with the iBeacon and Bluetooth proximity, which narrows you down to like. Uh, it does meters, but it's like, it's like inches. It's really, really, really accurate.
Never heard of that.
Well, yeah, that's like if you buy an air tag to like, you know, you stick one in your wallet or whatever.
Using yours or somebody else's?
It uses everybody's, anybody's Apple device. They're all, they're, every Apple device is broadcasting a beacon of its exact, uh, exact location. And that's how air tag technology works. I just don't know, I don't know if third party apps like ours are allowed to use iBeacon technology. But there's some speculation that certain apps do use it.
I see, so we need a partnership with Apple.
Yeah, right, yeah, but the nice thing is that power consumption for iBeacon is really low. It, it, it uses a, a newer form of Bluetooth.
I want that. How do we get it? Investigate how, is there a third party service we can go through?
Uh, I don't know. Um, I, I mean, I know that Apple locks it down pretty heavily, like it's secured, uh, but I don't know if it can be used. Officially by third parties. I'm, I'm, I'm looking.
But yeah, I mean, obviously you have to apply and, you know, be verified and everything. But, uh, this is really a tremendous, um, growth hack for us. If we can notify people when they're at the places they love. Or even the places they're just visiting, they can still check in, doesn't mean they love it, but it, it's a reminder that we don't have. If we can pull this off, like I've been saying this for years. That this is like kind of been the. The cornerstone of how circles would work is that it would suggest that you favor to check in when you're out and about, you know, and. I want to pull it off, like it. It would, it would unlock so much more retention and engagement. Jerry, were you gonna say something?
Oh, no, I'm, um, I'm just saying there is a quick way to get iBeacon enabled, but, um. There's, okay, yeah, there's some, um, ah, no, kind of like what Ian was saying. You do have to also enable Bluetooth, so that's a provision that we don't request at this time. But you have to allow Bluetooth access, which makes sense.
What does, what does that mean? Because my Bluetooth's. Pretty much all, well, I guess, wait, do I?
The app would, the, you're giving circles the app access to see, like, use your Bluetooth.
Like, how does it know when I, you know, connect to a stereo like on my car or something like that? That's Bluetooth, right?
Yes, but that's like you're going through the systems, like the system settings app on your phone to connect.
Yeah. So it's for the Bluetooth permission to like always be on, but then that would be, it would start hitting everybody's Bluetooth? I don't get, how's that?
Certain Bluetooth frequency, kind of like, uh, I think it's called like Bluetooth low energy.
Yeah, BTLE, yeah, it's, uh, I, I, in fact, I just installed a, a new fan in my house yesterday. And it uses wifi, but it uses, uh, you know, to connect to the web, but it uses Bluetooth to initiate the, the first connection. So it, when I installed the app, one of the initial permissions that I had to grant was Bluetooth access and it will retain that access. It's not temporary. So as long as, as long as you grant it one time, the app retains, as far as I understand, permanent Bluetooth access. And, and, and quick research, this is a combination of ChatGPT and a website I found is iBeacon technology can be used by third parties. iBeacon technology can be used by third parties, it doesn't look like it's anything. Proprietary or private or requires special anything, I I mean, I'd imagine that we probably have to go through a similar processes like our. You know, our app review, if they're gonna check to see another permission that we're asking for, they're probably gonna wanna know why. But it doesn't look like there's anything specifically prohibiting any third party from using it.
Okay, so you used it. For a fan.
Yeah, yeah, I just use Bluetooth, it, I used it to uh allow the app access to the Bluetooth functions of my phone. So that it can find all nearby Bluetooth application or all nearby Bluetooth devices.
Yeah, I've seen that one before.
I use some very, very similar with uh my Android phones, I have Samsung and Samsung offers. The same tags and whatnot like uh Apple does. So I have a little tag I put in Todd's backpack, so I know where he is all the time. Doesn't have a cellphone or anything, but uh. The tag reports back. To any connection to. Anyone else nearby tells me what his location is.
Um so, John, with this, I I did some research just now on a like iBeacons and how it works, so. You cannot get your own location from an iBeacon. So like. You can't say this is my location. However, what iBeacon technology relies on is it relies on the devices around you. Having location access.
Right, right.
Which ultimately the result is you get your location. Right?
I I don't, I don't wanna be. That, because again, Todd, it's the um. Let's say for for fear of the air tag, the air tag itself does not report a location.
Right, it's triangulating for me.
My, so like my.
Like, for example, Todd is at school and I have a tag in his backpack. Like if teachers and whatnot had cellphones there on campus with him, whether it's in his classroom or nearby. Um it reports back and says Todd's tag has been found here. And gives the location of his school. And what part of this campus he's on.
So, so effectively. It gives the location, your location, so that's what we want.
It, what that would, what what that would rely on though, John, is kinda what I'm saying is kind of a cluster of people.
I get that, yeah, Ian explained that already and I I like it, so I want that and um it sounds like the permission is a Bluetooth permission.
And I I just wanna talk it out a bit more because what I'm saying is it requires. A cluster of people to have circles installed.
No. No, it's any phone.
This is this, for this tag though, like the tag is part of the Android operating system. So it goes through Androids or Samsung's networks. And that's what at air tag does.
You might, you, you might be right, I'm not one hundred percent accurate, but it was my understanding that any Bluetooth device. Can pick up this tag. Whether it was iPhone, you know, iOS or Android, and I could be wrong, that was my impression that it was just, it was a Bluetooth technology. And any device that Bluetooth would report back to that device to give us a location, but I I could be wrong.
Because yeah, the tag doesn't have network connectivity. So the the tag, Bluetooth. So, I mean, you got something?
Until I have one that, like, it needs to establish a Bluetooth connection, so if. Otherwise, every everyone's location can be uh known. Uh if you look at it from um security per- security point of view, so that's why. You need circles installed to establish the Bluetooth connection. To find the location and the tags, they do that, it's just like. It's not like um because they all on the tag and there was, so they they do the establishment. Establishment of the connection, the Bluetooth connection first.
Well, that would require, so imagine like. A group of friends are hanging out or it's like maybe, maybe multiple people walking down the street all have circles installed with their phones. So then what would happen is if. Let's say, John, you and I are walking down the street. And then what what is basically would be like a buddy system, so let's say I have bad.
Yeah, I I understand all this, um Ian, what were you saying?
I I think, I think he's right, I'm researching it as he's saying it and it looks like that is the case in order, so Apple.
We don't get the piggyback off the other devices?
Now, it looks like Apple gets to reap the reward of their entire infrastructure. So, so like, let's say, for example, you stick an air tag in your bike, somebody steals your bike. Every single phone and every single air tag anywhere nearby is acting as a beacon for Apple's benefit.
So we can't get access to this, like no party, no nothing?
Yeah, it looks like they lock it, they lock it down completely, the only thing we get is the ability to broadcast Bluetooth low energy, so that if somebody else is using the same. It's called UID, so the ID of our application, we could communicate with their device.
That's, that's, that's what, that's what I found too.
Yeah, I, yeah, we we, that's pretty screwed up, but yeah, we're super limited, it looks like it probably wouldn't be of much help unless tons of people were using it.
Yeah.
That's a bummer.
I wish we were a monopoly.
Yeah, one day. Uh does, does Android offer anything similar?
Yeah, Todd said he's got the tag in his kid's backpack.
Yeah, I mean, they have, I just mean, do they offer access to their?
More open, right?
Yeah, there's a little more open than Apple's.
That'll be fifty percent of the marketplace, that's a great question, so maybe theirs is an open source or whatever, you know. Let's look into that, okay, but let's go back to what we can do. S- like, we lost track, we, I I wanna get my location. When I'm getting my haircut, so. Where were we?
Uh what I, what I, what we left off on, John, is while the app is in the foreground. The, the front end needs to send intermittently, send location reports.
Yeah, and it's, what's the interval, I don't think I gotta answer that question, how often can we ping? The more pings, the more accuracy.
Jay, isn't the, that task you're doing, that task only works in the background?
No, you can call it from the foreground, you just pass is background to false.
I don't know, but like the background.
Oh, the background fetch, yeah, background fetch only happens in the background.
Okay, so we have to do it manually, like to go, like, so that code you you doing there like for stopping background. We're not working this case when the uh app in the foreground, foreground. Okay, um. I mean, yeah, that's doable, we can do it as soon as, as long as the users. Opening the app, we can keep thinking the location.
So, okay, so if I open the app, I'm reading a message, I'm typing a message. Um, how many pings can we do?
What I think what we could do, John, is I I don't wanna say we need to be pinging every five seconds, but because the app is in the foreground. We could call these highly accurate location services and we don't necessarily have to worry about a background.
Yeah, what are, what are the highly accurate location services?
Precise.
Like, how's that work?
Precise location, you, it it's just a parameter when you request your location.
It's based on something, so like what makes it precise?
But it's based on GPS, but it takes a little longer to get.
It probably does more pings, cuz like that's the only way to get the precise location, there's no other way.
Right, it's not, it's not necessarily more pings, but that's close, it's actually more uh satellites. And uh acquiring satellites takes time, so it could take anywhere depending, you know, if you're indoors. Acquiring three satellites could take, let's say, five seconds, but acquiring twenty satellites, which would be necessary to get you down to, you know, feet of accuracy while you're inside. That could take a minute or two, so.
More triangulation.
Yeah, totally, that's exactly it.
Um, I don't want it to take too long cuz like I might only be responding to a message for like ten seconds.
Considering the volume of GPS satellites now, it's probably no more than ten seconds, I would guess, we would have to research it, but. I actually did a lot of experimenting with GPS in college and things have advanced a lot since then. You you used to be able to get seven satellites in open air in like five seconds, and that was like, you know, fifteen years ago.
That was only like within. Fifty meter accuracy, like not super accurate.
No, no, yeah, things are uh a lot better now. Um, but but indoors is a a big hindrance. Um, you know, if you're under like an HVAC unit that's on the ceiling of a building or you're under the, you know, it's two stories or something like that, it does make it. Nearly impossible to get a solid signal, no matter how long you wait.
Well, I mean, I can get a signal, it just might not be perfectly accurate.
Sorry, yeah, like a within even like twenty feet, you know, it depends, like in fact, even if you're in your house, you know, if you're downstairs in your house and you. And you turn on your maps and you just kinda zoom in on yourself, you can see it kinda bounce around for anywhere from, you know, like five seconds to a minute. And eventually it'll get you where it thinks you are, like it'll show you as, you know, a high precision uh spot, but it can take a little while for the satellites to really lock in on you. And that's really what we'd be waiting for and that is high power consumption, but it's, it's a one time, I think, I, like, we'd have to have Jerry confirm this, it's a one time. Quote unquote ping, but it's a, it's a slow process for that ping to complete for high, high precision.
Right. But but and again, that is something that we should have the ability to do more reliably because the app would be in the foreground.
Agreed, right, yeah, we would be able to prioritize power consumption because the app is in the foreground, so as long as they open it up and they're like wanting to do a check in. It should be relatively fast in most cases.
They they don't even have to be wanting to do a check in, they could just have the app open.
That's what we want. Um, okay, so. I wanna get, when, like when Tori was at. Um Auburn Ale House, I wanna get accurate reading, she got pinged that she was at Old Town Grill next door. And when they're not even the same building, when I say next door, there was like. An alleyway in between or a parking lot, so. It could have been way more accurate. So, what do we do? Um, I wanna ping often enough. To get the accurate location or precise or whatever the case may be.
I don't think we need to be paying location, like we don't need to be sending it to our backend every minute. I think every few minutes while the app is in the foreground on.
That's not enough time, I might respond to a message in ten seconds.
Well, then you back in the app, we like, so you you background and you come back in. So the first thing you do when you come back from the background is we'll report your location. But yeah, let's say you keep the app, let's say you keep the app, it's unlocked, you just leave it on the counter or something. Uh and if we keep it there, it'll be every, you know, three or five minutes, but then if you background the app, you come right back in. You'll get another location report, but we'll have to wait, we'll have to do some benchmarking and some timing to see. How long it takes to get a precise location, that, that's the the ringer. It is like Ian saying, to get enough satellites to where we can report a precise location, how long does that take? Cuz we, cuz what we can do is right now is like in the app, we turned it down a level, I think we have like high accuracy. Which is maybe accurate to tens of meters. So, you know, that requires less satellites. But and we're able to get it a lot quicker. So it's finding out what is the trade off curve on. Level of precision and the amount of time to return.
Yeah, um.
That that's take experimentation and maybe, maybe somebody wrote some papers on it, um. Not, not entirely sure, haven't done that like work yet, but uh. There there's probably a trade off curve that people find acceptable.
Sure. So what does the front end need to do now?
Uh, the friend, the front end needs to integrate, so when, when they unlock the app. First thing, like when they unback on the app, we wanna be reporting a precise location. Uh and and let's see how that works.
Okay, how much time would that take to get a precise location?
That's something that we're saying, it shouldn't be more than ten seconds, I would say worst case maybe thirty seconds to a minute. But that would be as if they're in a very congested area.
Okay, so I mean, are you able to do that?
Yeah, uh I can do that when the app is. Uh from the background to foreground, and Jay, I would, and I use the high accuracy or like the best for navigation?
John wants, John wants precise.
Yeah, we need to get really precise if we're gonna suggest the actual business they're at.
Well, yeah, um, yeah, the precise is called the best for navigation and it says here. The highest possible accuracy that uses additional sensor data to facilitate navigation apps. So. I think this will.
Okay, additional sensor information, I wonder what that means. Is that Bluetooth and stuff like that?
I was just reading more about it, it it looks like on Android, um we were talking about using Bluetooth LE. Uh for Apple and how restrictive they are for using iBeacon technology, for Android, it's kind of inherently included. Um, it's not like a separate thing that we have to ask for permission for or get, get approval for, it's just included in their location. Um, data, like wha- whatever they're giving uh our app. They're including their backend knowledge of what other Bluetooth devices or even wifi signals are nearby. Um, so they they're using like historical wifi data to to help lock down the user even more, so it looks like Android's. Um, process is just pop, pop a little easier in this case, I don't know, I mean, obviously that.
There's, there's a use case that would have helped tremendously, just this last weekend on Saturday. Couple of our investors were having dinner at a place, they really, they wanted to favorite it. And they were having trouble figuring it out. And if the app had just simply sent them a notification, would you like to favor it, like it would have streamlined the whole process?
Yeah, yeah, makes sense, I, so on iOS, it does look like they're, I'm, I'm doing my best to interpret what I'm reading here. But it does look like they're doing something similar, it's just not as good as what Android is doing for location accuracy. Um, it's a little bit more limited, but I mean, obviously, they can still lock you down really quick, I opened up Google uh Maps just out of curiosity to see how quickly it could pinpoint me. And it was like one second before it locked me down to a foot, yeah, I'm standing next to a window, but it's pretty damn fast.
Hmm, okay. So, but you're saying iOS is not quite as clear?
I can't find definitive information that Apple says we're using a combination of GPS. Wifi and Bluetooth information to provide accuracy, accurate information to our app developers, I can't find something that specifically says that.
The thing I mean just read said, it said like other services, so that's.
Yeah, so that's why I think that maybe they are doing it and it's behind the scenes, and and obviously it works really well, like my experience with Google Maps just now was incredible.
But Google is not uh Apple.
No, I'm aware, but I'm using Google Maps, which is a third party application on an Apple device and it was an incredible experience. So obviously it can be highly accurate and fast.
Cuz it's third party on Apple.
Right, right.
Now, uh for Android, the uh. Precise location permission, I believe that is something that 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 gives a permission prompt. I recall in Android apps, like when requesting permission for location. That you have to additionally grant permission for precise location. So I don't know if that's gonna be available off the bat without an additional request prompt.
Well, even if it is, I think we can inform the user that this will help them add favorites, so. Um, if they're, you know, those are the kind of users we want anyway. If they're really excited about using the app and want to support local businesses and wanna get their friends to find good recommendations. They'll say yes with the right presentation, for the people that are just like, I don't wanna share a location, I don't do this, that's, those aren't even the best users anyway, there's. Eight billion people in the world, I wanna get the few million that will go all in and um. So that's actually almost a good litmus test here too, is to see. Who is approving that and find, like even almost make a profile of those types of users and and market towards them and try and find. Those types of users cuz they'll be. Far and away the most valuable.
Yeah, I think we're the exception here, I I, everybody in this call is kind of the exception, we're the people who think about what happens with location data, the average person doesn't consider that kind of thing at all. And would be very likely to be okay with pressing high accuracy.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, most of like the college students, they just say yes to everything.
Courtney did just yesterday to the freaking app from our fan, I was like, that's not necessary. And she's like, oh, I thought it would need it to like turn it on or whatever, and I was like, no, it's just. To determine where we're at for the initial configuration, like you don't even need to approve it and she's, oh, okay, but she gave, you know, a exact location.
Right, good, okay, so we'll get plenty of people to do it, and we plenty of people will say no. But obviously plenty of people will, and the ones that do are gonna be hot, hot, much more highly engaged, so. Okay, so I I'm, this is, I'm very, very interested, I mean, obviously, we're eating up our whole stand up time for this because the value of this is so tremendous. If we nail it. Um, uh so, let's nail it, what else we need to do? I I wanna get the precise, so, and I want the most precise within the ten second window of someone, you know, checking the message or whatever.
And and John, just to uh, sorry to interrupt, just to confirm, I know, uh I'm not sure this is, I know this was an alternate. Way we used to do it, and I know you wanna get accurate information if we can, and that's obviously ideal. But in the past years back, didn't we uh suggest o- other nearby? Businesses, like we opened it up in some way, so if you were near something, would say, are you near these businesses, if so, check in or favorite?
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll get to that, um, but I wanna first try and get as accurate as we can. First wanna see if we can even get this thing to work, cause what happened is we turned this on weeks ago. For me, Tori, Laron, a couple people, and in the last two weeks, there's only been like nine. Message notification sent, not one was clicked on, Tori's already got three, doesn't remember getting a single one. Um, out of the three, only one accurately. Had her at the place, the other one was next door and the other one I haven't looked at yet, so we gotta first get this working.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So Jerry and Amin, I wanna get this working.
Did, did you check with Laron on the other ones?
No, I will, he's gonna, if I ask him, he can give me an answer that's confusing, so uh, be probably talking to him.
Okay.
So. What do you guys recommend, I wanna get this working soon. The last two weeks, you know, like a month, that's experiments, not really yielding any results, I mean, the results are, we're not doing a good job. So let's, I want this experiment to expand.
So immediate plan of action, let's go ahead and just start with a precise location. Like anytime you on background or you start the app from a cold start, you get a precise location and you record it. And anytime you background the app, like anytime you bring the app back from a background, we do that.
I mean, you're working on that?
Was that?
I mean, is working on that, right?
Yes, this is all the front end.
Hold on, let's go, I mean, what do you, what all do you see involved in that, like, is this just like one, one simple task?
Um, like if you unbang out the app, yeah, yeah, that's a simple task, but I'm not sure about the ping game. I would, we want to do the ping, which is gonna be periodically.
Right, how do, how do you uh, configure that?
Um, I'm not sure, I'll be, cause like there is the simplest way to do it. Which is like every, um, uh, ten second, minute, whatever we decide on, we can do that. Uh, but I'm sure there must be something that it's uh, where it's gonna be like uh. Uh, done uh, with the best practices. Uh, if not, I'll just like do it, like I'll do a, like a timer that like every. Every that time that we decide on, it's gonna fire the report to location. When the app is in foreground, but meaning the user is opening the app, he's somewhere in the app using it.
Okay, um, yeah, I wanna do whatever Uber is doing, you know, they're doing it and they're not draining people's batteries. So wh- what are they doing, I, I have a feeling it's pinging every, every second or two, because. You see the little car driving, and we're not doing this all day long, it's just simply. When we know the user is active and not at home. That, and that's when we want it, we want that, cause that's when we could trigger them to favorite or check in. And then it'll go off as soon as they background the app, which, I don't know, our average session, I think is like four minutes, so we're not talking about. Some kind of tremendous battery drain here.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll see.
We're gonna only open this up to our test group, so I would go aggressive. As aggressive as we can, like every second or whatever, and it's just gonna be me, Tori, Laron, Danny, a few people, so. Um, I'll tell you if my battery's gonna drain or not.
I, I don't even think we need to be reporting locations at a back end every, every second though.
Well, not necessarily reporting it, but like, I mean, we have to be triangulating, like it's gonna move, every ping is gonna be slightly different, and it has to triangulate. So what, how does that triangulation work, is, do we do that or does Apple do that?
Apple's doing the work of determining triangulation, but that's where I, I would think like, you're, I think what you're suggesting, John, is a ping every second. To ensure triangulation for accuracy, but it would be more like um, requesting a high accuracy ping. But only once every, let's just say for example, five minutes. It might take Apple anywhere from a second to twenty or thirty seconds to resolve that high accuracy. Single ping, but I would, I would assume, not knowing as much about it as everybody else does, that. Pinging as frequently as maybe once every three minutes to five minutes would theoretically grant us the same user experience. With lower energy consumption, because we're still gonna get a high accuracy ping for every one of those individual pings.
Yeah, can you find out what the average time is on that for?
That's a good question.
Let me know that, and then after a couple minutes, it's, we're not gonna get a second ping, so as long as the first ping is accurate enough. Then that's fine, or we can do the lower accurate more frequent pings. What's up, Dan?
Uh, can I borrow Chantel and jump on a, a call with her right now, or do you need her?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, Chantel, I'm gonna call you.
Okie doke.
It looks like um, up to twenty seconds.
Okay, that's not that long.
And it seems like average is three to seven.
Perfect, I mean, if we could get a couple of those, and then do we triangulate from those, cause like, where does? You know, like if we got, let's say we get three. How do we get the center of that triangle?
We don't, um, and and I, I'm speaking pretty confidently about that, but Jerry and Amin, I don't know if you guys can confirm with. My understanding of how this works. That data, all of the triangulation data is occurring on Apple's side. And we're simply receiving the results of what we are requesting, which is a high accuracy. Or, you know, many points of triangulation ping, whether.
Does that mean then, the, okay, so if we got three, does that mean it ignores? Number one and number two, and now number three is considered the center of the triangle?
That would be, that would be correct as far as I understand, yeah.
It's you, you continue to like improve on its location.
Okay, so we don't have to do any triangulation, we just take the light latest one.
That's, that's my understanding as well, I'm, I'm reading about it as I'm, as I'm talking to you guys, and as far as I can tell, that's exactly the case. In fact, there's even a couple of apps that I was looking at that, I mean, you can kind of do this with Google Maps. You'll watch it where it'll show your position when you open the map and it'll show a big circle. And then about, you know, two, three seconds later, it'll move the circle, that's another ping update from Apple. That's not, that, that, it is in a, in a way triangulation that's happening. But it's a, it's a pre calculated triangulation that's already, already occurred on the backend and sending you now their new results of that data. And so then a few seconds goes by and maybe you pick up three more satellites, and now you're looking at a new resolved location with even more refinement. And it'll just keep on bouncing around, but every time you see a move, that's a ping and Apple having already sent us all the results of that location data from that ping.
Okay. Cool. I want that.
I'll be right back, I start.
Okay, so then averages five to seven second. So I suppose we could get as many of those as we can when the user foregrounds the app. And each one becomes more accurate. Right.
Yeah, once, once we get that initial lock. Once we get that initial precise location, right, yeah, we, our location will be pretty, pretty good.
Pretty good, yeah.
As long as they're in the app and they don't reset the connection.
Yeah, okay, then we don't, then we can. We don't know if they're to stoplight.
What do you mean a stoplight?
You know, they're at a red light, they're driving, we don't know if they're stopped at a red light, like we need another ping like ten minutes later, that's tricky. Because. Like, they might not open the app again for ten minutes. You know, if you're at a restaurant, you open the app for a message, we get a precise location. And then. You eat your, your dinner, you leave. You open it back again at home.
The idea is if we can get a ping every, between every five to fifteen minutes, if we can get a ping. I'm almost ninety-nine percent confident that we'll be able to determine where they are and like. Where they're just passing through.
Yeah, I know, that, that's if we can get that, and that will happen, or if they allow permission always. Situation with, um, the one that Tori, the three that Tori got, were those precise? They're like, what kind of ping was that, like how did, how did it determine where she was?
I mean, can you check, but I believe those were like the high accuracy, which maybe they report up to like tens of meters accurate.
Is there something you could send him that he could look at?
Uh, that's the code that that determines.
Uh, what, what do you want me to check?
Yeah, so the location reporting we have now, uh, is it using the high accuracy level, or what is it doing?
Well, if it's in the background, app is in background, it uses the balance. Which is accurate to within one hundred meters. And if it's not in the background, it uses the high, which is accurate to within ten meter, ten meters.
So let me get that information uh, for Tori now, uh, and then.
So when the app's in the foreground, it's the high accuracy, is what you're saying, I mean, that's how it's been the last few weeks?
Yeah.
But it's precise, like there's high and then there's precise.
Is there a higher one than that one, I mean?
Yeah, there's the higher one, which is called best for navigation, it's the one that it's uh, I was talking about earlier, it's uh. Possible, is the highest possible accuracy.
Okay, I'm not sure if Ian was looking at that, Ian, are you back yet?
It's like, I think that's me.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, so are you looking at that one as five to seven seconds, the most precise one?
Say that again?
There's like three levels, there's balanced, there's high, and then there's precise. And you said it's five to seven second average for the highly, I don't know if you were looking at the high or the precise.
Let me scroll back up, so it gives a breakdown, the one that I found says, um. If you're outdoor with strong GPS signal, it's two to five seconds. If you're indoor and there's wifi, which it uses wifi to assist with triangulation, uh, it's three to seven seconds. If you just restarted your phone, so there's cold start, no GPS, nothing, it's ten to twenty seconds. And then if it's an app requesting a background update, it's a little slower, that's five to ten seconds.
And that would be for a precise location?
Yeah, for, from my understanding, each of these is to determine the most precise version of.
You have to be on a wifi network for the wifi one?
I don't know how that works, but I do know that it, it relies on available nearby wifi networks to assist in triangulation. My understanding, and I, I saw this when Apple rolled it out years ago, is that um, they basically said, let's say you live in an apartment building. And you're on like the second story of twenty stories, well, there's all of these wifi uh, signals around you, the other could be a hundred. Um, but that, that information is really, really good for providing triangulation data, and of course, Apple. They compile all of that information, like every single wifi network that you've ever even been near, they've compiled that data and sent it back to their, their backend. And they, they store it, and they know where on a map that wifi network is broadcasting. So because people don't typically change their wifi names very often, it's a pretty reliable place to identify. A combination of your, of your horizontal location on the planet, as well as how, how high up in a building you are. So yeah, if there are a bunch of wifi signals nearby, like if you're in a building, you're, or like a shopping complex with four restaurants all side by side. Yeah, technically that is a component that they're supposed to be using to improve accuracy, and that's just a component of the GPS, or sorry. Location data that they're sending our app, not, as far as I understand, we have no control over how they determine it. They just put that data together for us, based on the type of request we ask for.
Okay, s- okay, so Amin, we wouldn't have the precise one on for Tori, is that right?
Um, I mean, as far as I can do is like, I'm gonna request for the highest possible. And it's from now, it's not up to us to know whether this is accurate or not, it's just so we get our location back.
Yeah, but my question was, a couple weeks ago, uh, Tori got a notification about where she was. But at that time, we weren't doing the most precise.
I have that information, John, that these location reports she had were not from the background. They are from the foreground, that if she opened the app from a cold start, so those would be probably using the high profile.
And there's a higher one.
Right, there is a higher.
Okay, am I gonna get a different permission request now for precise, cause I've seen that before?
That's what we would have to check, but I, I almost think there is.
I haven't seen that for a while.
Yeah, I haven't seen it for a long time either.
I feel like that, I feel like they, they just include it now, it's like, they, they make the decision for us whether or not. It's needed based off of the app's request, I'm not certain on that, but they may have hidden that.
That'd be helpful, all right, well, let's go for it with our test group, and we'll just see how it goes. So I mean, I want it to be the most precise that we can get. And Jerry, we need it to know that you've been stopped. I mean. In the testing stage, I guess it doesn't really matter. Yeah, maybe we should say. I'm trying to avoid being, the, the user being stopped at a red light.
I.
But also, but also capture the conversation that happens in less than a minute. It's not really, there's no real easy way, what, what are we gonna say?
We won't, I won't notify them unless they're at that red light for a very long time.
Yeah, but that doesn't work, because I, a typical user may not be in the app for more than ten, fifteen seconds to respond to a message. And then maybe doesn't respond to a message till they've gone to a different location.
Yeah.
That doesn't help us.
Just, I guess just a refresher now, what I'm doing is, he said, I'm, I'm going, going to send a notification. That if you've, that if you've received uh, consecutive location reports from the same location. Uh, no less than five, but no more than, I think, twenty minutes apart.
Okay, so it'll be, you, you have to have more than one ping within five minutes.
Not, not within five, I said no less than five, so if you, if you ping the same place within.
Like no less than five, right?
Yeah, so if it's in two minutes, I'm gonna wait, but then if at five minutes, you send another location report. And you're in the same location, then I'll, I'll queue it to send a notification.
How precise does this have to be, like, okay, so let's, I was getting my haircut and. I open the app, it gets a location, then I open the app a few, a few minutes later. Does it have, like, what if it thinks I'm at a different business next door, does it just like now erase both of those? Like.
We, we have the historic, we have, we always keep the historical logging. So anything can be tweaked in the algorithm that sends the notification. So if it does pick you up at a normal thing, I could say, okay, well, if I, if I'm at the haircut place at this time. And let's say there's a McDonald's next door, um, I get a notification, like it reports I'm at McDonald's. But then, let's say, five minutes later, I get a notification, I'm at the haircut place again. But I never get another location report, I'm at McDonald's, then I'll know, okay, you, you're, you're very frequently within this top, this. Small time window, I am doing that, that you're at this location. That, that you're, that we've received multiple reports, even though they weren't consecutively saying you are at this haircut place. But uh, within those time ranges, we can see that you were there, we can send a notification.
Just a heads up, circles on my phone is already granted precise location, and I'm going through a bunch of my apps that are using my location. And almost every app that I have installed has precise location turned on, I didn't even know, I didn't even know this.
What we wanna make sure too is if we grant precise location, and we, let's say we deny, we, we withdraw. Our precise location permissions, and we open the app. Will the app kind of crash out and say, oh, you don't have precise location permissions and not report a location? Or is it just gonna provide the best available?
Well, we'll, we'll test that out.
All right, that's, uh, just a call out.
Yeah, first, I wanna first get this working, right, there's a lot of variables here. I guess I'm thinking of normal behavior of opening and closing the app, like. Nobody's gonna sit there with, with the app open for fifteen minutes, so. Opening it, and then the five minute thing isn't even really necessarily. Like you might open it. Respond to a message, close it, and then open it a couple minutes later, respond to a message, if you're roughly in the same location. That would, that's probably accurate location, you know? So what I, what I don't wanna do is have these conditions so strict. That we never send a notification. So. When it comes to this precise location, how if if you get three pings and they're all different locations, even though they're within. Ten meters. Or fifty thirty meters or something, wh- what happens?
Within ten meter, but they're all three different locations?
Yeah, let's say within thirty meters of each other.
Yeah, then I I wouldn't be. I wouldn't be that confident. Unless I remember the third ping will be the most accurate. So we would go off of the third, if they're within thirty meters, you're in a, you're out of business, you're in a parking lot or something. So you you know, it's gonna get more accurate each ping. But we want that third ping. You know?
Okay.
Like, if you if you get three pings in five minutes, but that's also assuming somebody has the app open for five minutes or opens it three times in five minutes, which might not necessarily happen.
I g- I guess I wanna look at. The dashboard or whatever it, I want I wanna know. Options are.
Yeah, the most, so what we really be relying on is we relying on how often the front end is going to report the location just to the backend. Uh, I keep all those records. Uh, I I I keep all those records as they come in. So it's not like I'm losing anything from the backend. Uh, we, I think, most important, John, is making sure the front end is sending the backend, the the.
Okay, that makes sense. You gotta get that. Okay, so we get that going and then from there, we can fine tune. Our triggers.
Bingo.
Okay, okay, so I mean, but so I mean, how how often can you get a precise location? Like, what what are your controls?
Like, uh, I can make um call that function every second or ten seconds we want to. But again, we'll we'll be passing that we want the the highest accuracy. And. That will be uh up to the to to the system to give us back the the location.
I have a question, actually, I mean, so if you request a location, so you know how kind of what Ian was saying, when you open Google Maps, you get like this circle around you? And that kind of shows that you could be eating inside that circle? Do we get that this from our location library?
I mean, we we have to, we have to, because there's no way that Google has. Some kind of unique. Process with Apple. That allows them to get that view.
I'm pretty sure the answer is yes, too. And and John, that's why I'm saying is that. If we get a precise, we know exactly how precise the location is, John, so. It reports when when we get a location report, we should know how confident it is in that location report that it says. It's within ten meters of this location, twenty meters, or it could be like. You know, three feet.
Right, okay.
And then we could use that, you know, to know.
Have you been getting that in the reports?
Uh, so I don't send that information in the report right now. I'm just sending a latitude and longitude, but we can enhance it to include that.
Who who does that?
So that we would be working on that both sides. I'd have to add the support for that field and I mean, would have to send it to me. But right now, Bean has to see, is he getting that 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 radius?
Their core location is what they define to us and they define it in meters.
True, uh, that's, yeah. Like, we can get the latitude and longitude with the accuracy as well. And the description on it here says the radius of uncertainty for the location m- measured in meters.
Great, and if we get that, John, now now we know when we get a location, we know how confident the phone was when it got that location.
Okay, so I mean, what do you have to do to configure that?
No, nothing. We just get in the response and we send it back um to that mutation.
Okay, how do you?
Yeah, yeah, I think Jerry needs to do some changes to to be expecting. There will be not only sending the location. But we will send in the accuracy as well.
Yeah, can you, can you send me like how that how that field's formatted, just like have it, it's just like a decimal?
It's a number. It says here, either it's gonna be a number or null. But I think it it says it can be null on web, so uh if it's not available, so I don't think it's gonna be ever not for us. On the mobile. Uh, and the type in here is just a number. I'm not sure. I think it's gonna be a decimal. But number like JS, uh, number which can be decimal and everything, so.
Yeah, I assume we can implement logic that basically says, let's wait until, you know, let's let's give it a certain amount of time. And let's just wait until we get a ping that's less than ten meters. As an example, and then we utilize that data. That way, John, you were saying, you know, wait until the third ping. It's not necessarily true that the third ping is the most accurate. It's actually possible that the first ping will be the most accurate. It just depends on what GPS data was captured in each of those pings, but because we know.
I thought we were saying. It takes all the pings and triangulates for you each one successively better.
Each each ping is commonly or does commonly work that way, where like you you get a ping and it says, okay, this is where we think you are. But the next ping, you might have lost six of twenty satellites. Just rotation of the earth. You could have lost all of those and now you've lost thirty meters of accuracy. So it's not necessarily, i- i- it is common that every.
So in other words, so in other words, it goes off of the most accurate. We can go off of that.
We should be able to define that, yeah, because now we're getting a value that says like, okay, it's within ten meters.
Okay, that is that what you see, I mean?
Yeah, that's the accuracy for.
Okay, and you can pass that?
Yeah, we can pass that, yeah.
Okay, so Jerry, what do you need?
Uh, I need about two minutes for that change to deploy, so I mean, can test it.
Okay. Cool. Great, so we can test it now. All right, so this is pretty cool. So then. How often can we ping? Like, it ha- it has to be given enough time. Pinging every second would be too frequent, right? Cause it ha- it needs a few seconds to actually get accurate, right? So like, how? I'm wondering how it works. Like, if we pinged every second, does it just mean we don't get anything back? Or what does it do? You know, how do we set the interval? What do you think, I mean?
Um, we can do the, if we like, for example, do like every second, so. We can check whether are we requesting a location right now? If it is, just don't do it again, wait.
Okay.
We can do it this way.
I see, so that way it'll just go back to back whenever it's available.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I would like to do that when someone foregrounds the app because we might have a short window if they're reading a message or responding to a message. But then we can get, potentially get accurate reading of of where they're at.
Okay.
And then if they background the app, it stops checking, right? Cause that's.
Yeah.
Okay. And then if we want, Jerry, we could take it a step further, and if we get, if they foreground the app again. And they're still in the same area, then we send the notification. Uh, but we'll we'll decide that after we. Analyze what we're actually receiving. Okay, cool. This will go a long way for engagement. Well, especially if it's accurate, I mean, that's kind of a key. And then, you know, like I saw, I was saying, we could always say, are you near this place? Or like, and maybe give a list of three places. But let's see how accurate we can get it.
Yeah, in theory, we could just define, like, as soon as we get a ping response that shows a value less than ten, just stop there.
Yeah.
Well, no, we want, we'd want multiple Ian, um, because of the the potential of them being at us, like at a red light or something.
Oh, you mean if they're if they're traveling, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. We we at least want one more, uh, maybe uh within a couple of minutes. And then we could, we could give something from that.
Yeah. Yeah, Google, Google does what we're talking about to a degree. And um, they're pretty good at it. But I I I think that they use a combination of location data and businesses that you've already looked up. Like, I went to this pizza place in a city I'd never even been to before. And um. I think it was like two days after I left there, or after after I was even out of the city, I got a notification from Google Maps asking me how my experience was there. But I'd also routed GPS data using Google Maps to that location. So they not only knew that I was interested in that place, they knew I was there by location data.
Yeah, that's different.
Yeah, I mean, they have a huge advantage in the routing component, obviously.
Right. Right, right.
Maybe Google will buy us.
It's definitely possible.
That'd be nice.
I mean, it's something we've talked about. It's not out of the question. We we get a lot more value to our users with that data and that level of, I mean, their engineering team and everything.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, we're. Always fighting with two arms tied behind our back. So. What, is there more to this, Jerry, or are we good on it?
Oh, we just gotta test it out. We just wanna make sure that we're not waiting too long to get the precise location.
Yeah. Okay. So how much more limitation do you need there? I mean, do you have any questions?
Not, no, I I don't have questions, so I just need to know um the uh. The uh, so so the ping, uh, uh, like the interval.
Okay. And but you can make it wait for it to finish, right?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we go five seconds?
Okay.
And Jerry, we're gonna make this just for specific users. For our test, right? That's you're on your on your end, right?
Well, I only have the the notifications at least being sent to.
Yeah, but as far as the pinging, I don't wanna ping. Everybody.
That's the front end that has to control that then.
I see. Okay. Well, okay, then. Yeah, let's put it on. People on our team. I mean, for like me, Danny, Todd, Chantel, Ian, Tori.
I'll need the user keys, like for those um users, so I can only uh.
Yeah, um, yeah, uh, send the names, John, and I can uh get them for them.
Okay. All right, so. Anything else on that?
Real quick, does this matter what version of of circles we're in?
Yeah, it's not even out yet. Oh, yeah.
I mean, what? Because my my personal account is only on the Play Store version. If I need to use um one of the uh beta test versions, then I need to give you a different account.
Yeah, um, I'll let you know. But um, that does bring up a question about Android too, cause we have to turn the foreground services back on on Android, right?
I don't think so, because we'll all of this is gonna be on the foreground.
Well, they they were drilling us on foreground services last time.
Oh, yeah, true.
Yeah, but the problem was the podcasts. It turns out, because when we turned it off our location, they kept drilling us. So it wasn't until we turned it off for the podcast. I don't, I think we were fine with it with location. I think we were barking up the wrong tree.
I hope so. I hope, I hope, I hope we were.
We'll find out. So how do we um enable it for location for Android, I mean?
So the work that I'm about to do, it's while the app is on foreground, so. I don't think we need to get that that permission. On again. Cause like. That permission, it was like. To, if I remember, it was like about something like. To get like a foreground permission while the app on on background, something like that. Which that's what, which is, we're not doing that. I I'll have to look at to read on that again to be uh sure.
Okay, and I wanna use the more, they have Android supposedly more accurate according to Ian, like we can use the Bluetooth and all that stuff. So. That would be fifty percent of our users. It would be nice to piggyback on that.
Again, it seems like it's just inherent, by the way. Like, when we ask for uh accurate location data, it's just. They just add that in to how they're calculating. And and we're probably gonna get a similar result from them as we get from Apple with location. Um, con- uh uh confidence, where it's like, okay, it's probably gonna be within this many meters. They're just doing all of the math for us. I mean, it'd be dumb for them not to. It it's not, they can't possibly expect developers to. Reverse engineer their location data and then compile that and then triangulation information. They're giving us a clean copy of this is where the user is based off of everything that they know.
Okay, cool. Well, then we need that permission too. Okay, so. So I mean, how much time do you think you need on this to uh? Get it implemented?
Um, I'm working on it right now, so it's gonna be like an hour, something like that.
Okay, okay, why don't you give us an update, see while we're at it, cause uh it's been a couple of days, I don't remember everything that worked the last week.
Um, Friday, um, so working. I mean, Friday was all about the um. The onboard in.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, we kept working on our boarding forward.
Was there something we left off? I think we were gonna, did we leave something for today? I don't remember now.
Uh, no, I don't remember. Let me look in my notes, um. Well, just like some little bit improvement there, cause I have a notice says, in case if the SOT full, the refresh. So like if you have the SOT full and if you try to remove or add. Uh, from that list, it keeps refreshing.
That's right, yeah, I remember. I think that was the thing we left on.
Yeah, uh, I I have a note on it, so I can do that, this.
Okay, okay, cool.
Yeah, but most of it was working on the colcast screen. I mean, yeah, changing the order, it was like um. Uh, we did it like before the SOT and also we worked on the transitions there, the animations, the entry and existing animation between. Those screens, we added the fabulous. Uh, lofty there between the two lists. So, yeah, uh.
Okay, well, after this uh location thing, let's, will you do that other refresh?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. I'll come back to you too, cause I think I have some more questions, but um. Let's go to uh Ismail. So Ismail, you you have a problem with that check-in button as well?
Uh, I just tried it on my phone. I'm on the, let's see here. Uh, bill thirty-two, it's uh, I mean, it works, it's just, yeah, there's a bit of like before I see the information.
Yeah, there's something um causing it on our end, if I remember, because and the clue for that is that. There's nothing there, including the heart loader, and the heart loader. Appears like a split second before the list appears, so it's it's it tells me that. We're blocking something, and I remember seeing that like a year ago. I don't know why.
Yeah, it was um. Something related to locations I worked on that I remember a while back, um. Now, weirdly enough, on my, so let me see here.
We were just talking about locations, so.
So the second time I try right now, it's pretty much instant.
Yeah, mine's instant now too, like it got over the problem, and I know I've seen this before.
Hmm, maybe it's just the first time we're fetching that location data, it's taking extra long.
But but think about it, though, why is the heart loader delayed also?
Hmm, that's. Yeah, good question.
I there was there's an answer that we've already answered this, and I don't I just don't remember why. Amin might remember. When you when you tap the check-in button from the nav bar. Um, and it brings up nearby places. If you go to if you tap the check-in button and then places. It takes several seconds, and you don't even see a heart loader during it. I remember. Do you remember this problem from like months ago?
Um, I I need you to wait to see it. Give me a second.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt you.
So where should I go? Like the chicken tab?
Oh, I know why.
Yep. What is it?
This is because we're fetching the data first and only after we fetch the data, we need the la- the latitude and longitude to call the API. And the heart loader is being called not soon as you load we load the screen, but as soon as we make the API call. That depends on the location.
That's where we addressed this already, months ago.
But I thought so too. Which screen?
Um, this is the check-in screen. You go to check into the place.
I guess it's on the profile screen, John.
Nav nav bar. What was that?
I think we addressed this issue on like on the profile screen. If you go to a profile screen, it was slow.
No, because I remember it from the nav bar because it's trying to find nearby places, and that's a totally different experience.
Ismail, can you do like a file history for that file? See when the last time was changed and.
Um, sure, last time would be. Uh, three months ago.
Like the changes there were like about?
Um, but the changes, the bug fixes was, let me see here. Uh, this is four months.
That sounds about right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, but the changes, like the code changes, like you can see where we change accuracy for that.
It's not about accuracy. It's more about if we have the values or not. So John just wants the heart loader soon as we open the screen. But we're doing the whole the heart loader from the loading from the Apollo. So when you call the API.
Is there something else slowing it down too? Cuz it seemed unnecessarily slow.
Well, it's like I said, it's I guess getting that latitude and longitude the first time can be slower.
What's the accuracy we're using to get the location there? Can you send me the the file name?
Um, the file name is gonna be called index. It's gonna be under. Place under check-in screen, then places, or that's gonna be index. Oh, the accuracy is high.
Well, that's why when it's in high, it takes a little more time to get it.
Correct.
This is for the check-ins query, and is it that we're it's like whenever we're waiting for it to load? Okay, yeah, now this is.
The thing is, I the way we fix this, if I remember correctly, we use an existing location we have, and then we update it.
That's exactly what I was gonna suggest, because we were just talking about getting location when the app comes in the foreground. So why not get the existing location then and have it be good for like a few minutes?
Yeah, so I think I think I think that's what we did. Pretty sure that was the solution we have. Now, let me see here.
Since we're gonna be pinging more often. If the apps in the foreground. Then we can just use the most recent high accurate one.
Correct. Let me see here. So I have the latitude and longitude. Um, so they're initially set to, I guess, no. Yeah, they're initially set to no. So maybe instead of having them initially set to no. We can get that. Information from somewhere that's already pre-stored. I think we have a global state that stores location, right, Amin?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, so maybe we we get that global state, have it as the initial value. And then we. We go from there. Yeah. But yeah, anyways, long story short, John, it's. It's not showing the heart because we're waiting on the API call, and the API call needs that longitude and latitude, so. It will wait for the locations, and the first time you were getting that high.
But what my question is though, is what was our fix four months ago? Like what? What did we do then, and why is that not working?
It is because it is because we're using high in this screen. The accuracy high, that's why it slowed.
But no, we shouldn't wait for the, I guess, okay, so there's two things that I can think of, right? We can show the loading screen, like the heart right away, so there's no like blank period. And then wait for it to get finished fetching the location and then show the data. Or the second solution would be to use whatever we have, if we have any. You know, latitude and longitude that stored in our global state. We use that initially, and then once it gets the actual high. Um, location of the user, it would refresh the screen.
No, I don't wanna refresh that. That used to cause problems, but.
Yeah.
What did we I still don't I'm not clear what fix we did four months ago that didn't have that heart loader, like that first suggestion you just made as the first option? That is the that's kind of the obvious solution, is that to at least have the heart loader. While it's getting your location, which I'm sure we did four months ago. So what changed?
Maybe we did it for a different screen?
No, it was that one for sure.
Is that one?
Yeah.
Um, well, that's not the case here. It has been touched for a few months, so. Not sure.
Maybe it's four months.
Cuz like I remember the screen, I'm I mean, let me see, the screen did get refactored, and I remember I worked on it myself too for some of it. Could the refactoring process? Yeah, oh, yeah, I remember this. The screen was the corner there was like super, super hard to read, so I did it. Pretty big refactor on that screen. Now, I'm not sure if I got lost in the process there or something else, but.
That must be what happened. Probably got lost there.
Cuz it was like, like when I say a big refactor, I mean, like sixty percent of the code got changed.
Right, right, okay. So maybe we need to reintroduce the heart loader.
That's a super easy fix. Like we'll just do it like it'll just take me like ten minutes if that's what we wanna do. It's not a big deal. But yeah, that's that's how it's currently working.
I like that, but then I also like making it even more. Instant by grabbing the location as we open the app, which we're gonna do no matter what.
Correct, so that one will be, yeah, like you said, it would be good, not like it would be very good, not great accuracy. Which I guess in this case, it doesn't really matter cuz it's called nearby. It's not called exact.
Yeah, it will be. Pretty accurate though, because. It's gonna pull the location every five seconds, right? Like.
I don't know about that logic. Is that what we were doing?
Yeah, Amin just stepped away, but when he comes back, let's ask him about it cuz the more I'm thinking about this, we should just turn it on across the board because it's only gonna be.
Should we not fetch the user's location to begin with in that screen and just use the global one?
Jerry, what do you think about that?
Well, I think the globe the global location we're going to establish when we do when we open the app, but that would be, I think, using. The precise method, the precise accuracy.
And will that update every five seconds as John was saying?
We would need we would need Amin to make sure that's handled in handling the global state.
Or is that the plan at least?
I I would hope so, yeah.
Okay, so if that's the plan, then I don't see the necessity to recall.
Right.
That relocation API again.
Right.
And just use the global state, period. That way, and then we'll have the heart loader. If the global state does not exist. Then we, you know, we need the heart loader, but if it does, then you pretty much should not even see the heart loader ninety percent of the time, or it should be like super, super fast.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay.
But will you still put the heart loader there?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make it on screen load, not on API call.
Okay, okay, cool.
I can give this to my updates since I'm already.
I was about to say, yeah, why don't you go for it?
All right, so yesterday or not yesterday, Friday, we. Worked on that new bill thirty-two. So main changes I had was I created the deep link for the rewards web view. So now if the backend returns the. Deep link via notification, it should navigate you to that web view. And I changed the back button behavior where it will take you to home screen. It won't just. Had you trapped there. Another thing I worked on was in discovery feed when you try to reply to a. Post, a card. Um, on Android, it was covering the keyboard, but I mean, the keyboard was covering the input field. So now I shouldn't be doing that anymore.
Good point, Chantel. By the way, the back button did work on the reward store. Good job. Chantel, can you see if that? Uh, problem was fixed for the. Uh, keyboard. What what was it when you you messaged from the discovery card?
When you go to discovery and you're trying to reply to a or try to send a message through discovery, if you'd like the reaction model.
Yeah, let me see.
As well as edit, if you try to edit in chat, those two were covered. Now they shouldn't be.
Yeah, will you test that, Chantel?
And one last thing is the blur, since you know we're already having Android lists. When you edit, the blur sometimes wouldn't cover the whole phone. Now it should on Android. Um, so yeah, I should test that.
Hey, cool. Works. Oh, uh, yeah, no, actually, I think that's the way it's supposed to work. Okay. It just looked a little odd the way the. The background doesn't come down all the way, and it kind of confused me, so. But that's just like a little styling thing that is only there when the keyboard's down.
What do you mean? The blur?
Yeah.
Didn't cover all the way?
It it just stops at the bottom of the screen so that the nav bar is the only thing that's not covered. It just, that's the only thing I would change. It's a little styling thing, but it doesn't stop me from using the function.
You wanna send a screenshot to Ismail?
Yep, doing that right now.
You say that nav bar, you're talking about the our app nav bar or the?
Yeah, the one on the bottom.
Oh, I can't have the keyboard down on iOS cuz it leaves the whole screen. See on Android, right, send me a screenshot, yeah.
Just sent it to you.
Probably need to just, oh, I see, so it's just okay. Yeah. Okay. Okay, yeah, I'll take a look at that. Probably to make the modal cover the whole screen. I thought it was weird. Anyways, well, yeah, I'll definitely take a look at that. Um, all right, and one other thing I worked on was the update follow modal. Oh, sorry, that's what my notes, I should probably say, when you add somebody to chat and you wanna follow them. The model that pops up now has optimistic response when you click the follow button. And then it updates the follow button from white to blue, indicating that you're not following that person, and it doesn't navigate you when you click follow. You have to click on the red X that got added at the bottom.
Tell me about the red X again. Actually, could you show me?
Yeah, I sent you a screen record.
I I remember, but let me look at it one more time cuz I haven't actually tested it in the test.
Sure, do you want me to resend you the screen record or a live demo?
Live demo.
All right, and I'll just have.
I wanna I want these guys also tested.
Sure. So I just need to set a few things up. I need to unfollow. I need to remove myself from the group or. There is none, and I need to unfollow.
Are you gonna share your screen?
Yeah, I'm just setting up. Okay, I'll follow, following, yeah. All right, now we're good to go. And this is the phone. Can you guys see my screen now?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and add. My cell.
So Chantel, Todd, I want you guys to test this on Android.
So if I click add and.
Yeah, he's gonna add a user to a group that he's not following.
And it's only one user. It can't be like more than one.
Right.
Cuz that's when the modal pops up. I click save. Um, uh, am I following? I'm not following.
With admin.
Yeah, adding a user that's that we're not following to this group, is that right?
Uh, wait a second, something is off. I'm not following. Um, yeah, I'm not following. Oh, yeah, no, I'm not. Oh, it's because I have. I added logic where. If you if that modal pops up for a user, does it keep popping up again?
Mm-hmm, I remember.
Yeah, so it started on the phone. On the memory.
You could do it with a different user.
Yeah, but now I have to find somebody else. Let's try maybe Chantel. Well, let me make sure I'm not following you first.
So.
But yeah, that's also one thing to test. You you should you should only see it once per user, so it doesn't kind of get on your nerves. Okay.
Would admins have any special permissions outside of this?
Like what?
Like, for example, the whole not being able to add more than one person you're not following. But let's say I'm in the investor chat.
You can add as many as you want. The modal to ask if you wanna follow the person.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so like right now, I'm not following you on this account, and I I'm gonna add you to a chat.
Got it.
But it's only gonna be one person. If there's more than one, then I'm not gonna show the modal. But since I'm on second one person, click save. You would see you add a chance to the chat.
Whoa, whoa, we got a problem there.
Oh, cuz the name is long.
Yeah, screenshot that. That should wrap on two lines.
That's the initial design we had, which worked fine, but because she has a long name.
Yeah.
Then, yeah, that's a concern. So I can add a maximum.
Maybe on that, it could be that it says you added name, and then to the chat will always be on the second line. And I can just.
I can have it where it just wraps when it's done. Like I can draw like invisible line here and an invisible line here. And whenever it exceeds that, it just wraps down, and it will be.
Okay, leave it leave it here. Don't leave. Don't leave the screen. Chantel, that follow button, can you make it? Like solid pink with white lettering?
Yep.
It's I'll my eye wants to go to that red X.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
Okay, solid pink with the white lettering, and then. Ismail, when you said putting the left and right margins, can you line up the left margin with the edge of that avatar?
Yes.
So then and then equal on the other side.
Okay, was that following like within this?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
I have a quick question right here. If you add multiple people that you're not following, would they be in a list like under Chantel?
That's gonna be like, it's gonna be like version two of this.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious. Okay, okay.
We haven't got there yet.
There right now, if you add one person, Todd, you would see this modal.
I see what you're saying.
Okay, well, yeah, the design updates we're gonna have, yeah.
So Ismail, if if you did add two people. But you are following one of them, would it still show you this? Would it still show you this for the person you weren't following?
No, at the moment, it's just, um.
It's just a hard cutoff on.
On one person, correct.
Can you, can you do that? Like, is that pretty easy to do for now?
It would be doable, it'd be.
Here, yeah, here, it would have to say, you added Chantel and John to the chat.
But that's where it gets a little crazy and that's where I wanna consider maybe another API because. Ooh, I checked the relationship with you and each user, and if you have, if I add like five and only one is not following, it's gonna call the API six times, right? Or if you add five hundred, it's gonna call it five hundred times. So that's where.
Just to encourage you to add a friend or to follow somebody who you added to a chat that you're not already following, right?
Right.
Hmm.
What are your thoughts?
Ah, I try, I understand that it gets tricky once you add two, um, or well, more like it gets tricky when you add twenty. Because then you have to figure out, are we scrolling?
Well, we could just, as we do right now, just show it for one only, you know, now we could get a little more fancy is what I was hoping. Cause the use case happened, Laurent added two people to a chat and did not follow. One of them, but he would totally follow him.
Yeah.
If he had seen this.
Yeah, and I can't imagine that there's that many situations where a user would. Under regular circumstances, add more than one person to a chat that they're not following.
Yeah, it happens, you know, it happens, you know.
It seems like something we would do.
Well, it happens because it's, these are newish users and that's what we want.
Yeah, you know what, like if I added our kickball group and like there's a bunch of new people on the team.
Yeah.
I might add, I might add five at a time.
Right. Right.
Yeah, it would, I would almost be better to say, I think like you added five people. That you're not following, would you like to follow them? And then I click a button that takes me to a dedicated screen to follow them.
Yeah, we could, or a list of on here that's not, you know, cuts off after like five or six or, you know, it doesn't have to be.
That's true, yeah.
I think we have a design where a drawer comes up where you can easily see everyone who's in there.
Drawer would be a better.
Um, the members list.
You know what? I don't know why I didn't think of that, the drawer would be a better design here, just in general, for one thing, that header would fit.
Yeah.
And it's just kind of like a better look and we get much more space. Sorry, Ismail, how hard would it be to convert this to a drawer?
Um, well, I would need the new design. You have, it don't look like this with a drawer.
You have that reusable drawer component you made.
Yeah, but, um, we're not gonna have a button anymore or this.
We would, we would still have the follow buttons.
Yeah, but I'm assuming it's gonna look, okay, so first of all, should I just stop demo, demoing here? Are we not gonna use this?
I'm, I think a drawer is better.
Okay, so uh, again, this is just if you follow. Optimistic response.
Yeah, with that optimistic response, is all that stuff will carry over to a drawer, you're not like starting over from zero, are you?
Uh, well, let's see, well, cause when you say drawer, I, I can't imagine the same code with the. Cause like when you say drawer, I'm thinking it's gonna look something like this, where it'd be a list of names and you'll have your status here and you can just follow, 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 follow.
Well, let's look at a drawer, hit the three dots on a card. That's your reusable component drawer, right?
Three dots on a card.
Yeah.
No.
Find a place?
Um, it's more like if you wanna see like the members here maybe.
Okay.
Oh wait, this doesn't have enough. Members, we need to put a bigger group, let's go to test. And, uh, okay, yeah, this is a drawer.
Okay, that's your reusable component drawer?
Correct.
Okay, so this is what we would want and then we would have invite button, or not invite, sorry, follow buttons next to it.
Yeah, I would assume you'd have the, you know, the, the user and your relationship with that user. And then you can just like follow, unfollow, do whatever you wanna do, real quick.
Yeah, um.
Would it only show the people that you're not following, right?
Yes.
Um, well, if it's a drawer, I'm assuming you can just list everybody here.
We don't want to, that's not the purpose.
Or the purpose, only people you don't follow, okay, um, well, hmm, then. Uh, okay, so I'm obviously not gonna call the API I'm calling now. With like, if you have twenty people, we're not gonna call it twenty times, it's gonna take forever.
No, one time.
So. Um. Let me see here, do we have something in the backend that can give us that at the moment, or is that something we have to create?
I bet we do.
Um.
Jerry, you following what we're doing here?
Yes, but we, the users that are being added, um, hmm.
So like, I'm gonna pass you an array of twenty people and I'm just gonna filter out the people who. Who are not, who I'm not following.
I, alternative, would it, I have an alternative, would it, in that search chat, I think you're calling search chat. What if I return the relation in there?
Um. Hmm, well. Right now, we're, um, we're not calling any APIs, cause so these are people that I'm adding to a list that I'm gonna add to chat, right?
Right, but where, where's that list coming from? When I'm saying whatever that list that gives the people that you're adding, I can return you a relation in there.
Oh, I see. Um. Yeah. That could work.
Yeah, send me the query. And, um.
Or not members, yeah, it is members, I mean, we want to.
You need a bigger group and hit show more.
And, and, no, it doesn't matter, like even these, like if I just search here.
Hmm.
Um, I, you're, well, hmm, hmm, let me think about this. Cause there's more than one API, one gets us the contacts and the other gets us the. The users, so. Um. Yeah, I see where you're going to, Jerry, let me get you that information, what APIs we're calling and let me get you all of, all of them and. Which, and I'll, and I'll kind of in my head, try to see where the best. What, where, where the best place I would expect this information to be available, that I can, we can go from there.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay, and as far as design, I guess, we're gonna have to go back to Figma and recreate the design, cause it's gonna be more of a. More of a, if, whether it's one or a group, that way there's no face on face too. It's just.
Yeah.
One approach, you just get the list and then like you can like, you, I'm assuming you have like this little pills next to the names where you can interact with it. And it's gonna be via drawer.
Yeah, can you still do the optimistic response and all that?
Yeah, yeah.
Cool, okay, that's a be- better design and that'll be valuable. Chantel, you have a question?
Uh, it's not related to this, I just wanted to see real quick, who would I go to about? An issue regarding trust tips.
What's the issue?
Um, so I had just checked in with my friend Emmy today and I left a trust tip, it's at the library. I've left a lot of trust tips there because I write something like every time I check in. Um, but it put the text from my trust tip just now. To an old trust tip that only had photos from two years ago. And I have got a lot of other trust tips since then, not a lot, but I mean, definitely more than two.
Oh boy, I don't know if that's back in or front end. Ismail, who do you think?
Hmm, I know there's a lot of funny logic when it comes to trust tips, I'm showing it, um. And you're, you, when you say it only has two, that's when you visit the profile or, or when you're on the discovery or activity feed?
Sorry, I, I was just explaining, uh, trying to say, uh, it's not like I've done, uh, uh, like twenty trust tips since then. It's, it's been like, I don't know, let me check, like four or something like that. But I just left a trust tip today and it's saying that I wrote it two years ago. Along with.
And is this on the profile or on the discovery?
Yeah, on the profile, so it, I. Don't know if I had this from two years ago, maybe, yeah.
Hmm.
Um, and then I've got another one from, I've got two from last year, another one from ten months ago and then.
So all those math, okay, so let me get this straight, is the timestamp off or is it just not filling?
The timestamp, well, okay. The timestamp is off for this last one, it's connecting to an old trust tip that didn't have a trust tip. Other than a photo.
It had a photo, it merges them both into one.
Yep.
Okay.
Even though there's a, even another two after that that have photos.
Is this, um, is this production or QA right now you're on? Production.
Well, okay, QA, it, QA that points to production, so thirty-two, yeah, I'll send it to you.
Okay, share me, like share, just share the profile within circles, you know what I mean? Um, to, yeah, to, just do it to test, Ismael test, with the orange cap. The cap, the orange background, that's the profile. Yeah, so just send it there, that way I can just, um. Have, access the profile so I can debug it, um, I will see if it is front end, I, it might be backend, cause what I am doing there is I'm mapping them. Pretty much, um, but I, yeah, so I. I'm not gonna say it's backend right away, I do wanna do my own tests and see if it's. If we're merging anything on the frontend, or if we're just mapping them, if we're just mapping them, then it would, it would probably have to be on the backend. If we are doing some kind of merge, then yeah, it might be frontend, so I'll have an answer for you on that, um, soon.